Good evening, welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting. Today's date is Tuesday, September 3rd, 2019. It is 6:00 PM. We will like, we'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation. Pastor James Parish from Saint James United Methodist Church is here. Please stand. I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, we just gather here in this evening for the business of the city. And we pray your blessing over all of our municipal leaders, for their tasks and the work that they have before them. Lord, in the moments in which the duty seems so great, inspire them. In the moments in which we continue to grow our city and the people of the city, bless us. For the work of all of our leaders, we just ask that you'd be with them, and may they continue to lead and guide under your watchful eyes. And Lord, place your watchful hand over our city and keep it safe. Keep it safe over all of our force defenders, for all those that would go before. For all these things, we pray in the blessed and holy name of the One who is above all others. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor. Susan, roll call please.
Mr. Stinson.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Mr. Shannon. Here.
Mr. Preister.
Here.
Mr. Burns.
Here.
And Ms. Welch.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. This meeting is conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the council chambers. Item 5, Approval of Agenda Consent Agenda Claims and Advisory Committee Reports. 5A is Approval of the Agenda. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll moat to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Burns. Any discussion? Please vote.
Mr. Preister, do you just want to do a-
I hope yes.
Okay. All voting yes.
Thank you. 5B, Approval of the Consent Agenda. Items marked with an asterisk are approved where this item is unless otherwise removed. Are there any items that the council wishes to remove from the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Shannon.
I would remove item 8B.
Item 8B, we'll go to the regular agenda. Any other items? Seeing nobody, need a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as amended.
I'll second that.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Welch. Please vote.
All voting yes.
Alright, item 7, thank you. Item 7, Special Presentation. 7A is Presentation from Sarpy County Economic Development Corporation on the Second Quarter. Josh Sharvat.
Good afternoon, council members. Second quarter update, and I'm kind of going to go into third quarter a little bit too because it's already September, and we're almost on our way to fourth quarter. But I'll start real quick and just briefly go over kind of the Excel sheet here. There's kind of two trends that we're seeing. You know, we're seeing, we saw kind of a bigger jump in the labor force, and that kind of went in tune with a little bit of a creep up in the unemployment rate. Nothing we're really worried about now. That's kind of a good thing because we've been so tight lately. One of the things we're seeing more and more is projects just asking for workforce numbers. And then we kind of give Mars, and it's such a tight, tight labor force that it's not the most attractive place to come, you know, in Sarpy County, Omaha Metro, just for that workforce aspect. So, seeing those numbers pop up is definitely something that we were happy to see. Also with that, all the other items we track, building permit valuations, housing permits issued, multifamily permits and flats, those have all kind of decreased as compared to last year. So, still pretty, you know, pretty strong numbers, but it seems like the past two years have been kind of, kind of out in the stratosphere. So, and also kind of with the weather we had in the long winter, nothing terribly too shocking there. And the conversations we've had, it seems like it's just kind of, kind of, it's leveling off, but not so much as slowing down. I know there's a lot in the pipeline once some of the sewer gets, gets put in south on Ziwel Creek. But with that, I'll kind of move to some of the project activity. We did land one project second quarter. That's a, it's a company out of Springfield, Nebraska. They're called Redberry Innovation. So, we helped them get $40,000 in customized job training grants from the state. So, they're kind of a pretty interesting company. Their founder's, one of them's Courtney Grace, and she teaches, well, she did teach, I think she still teaches at Bellevue University with their cybersecurity college there. So, they kind of do ethical hacking, cybersecurity, they do some military contracting. So, a really, a really good company. Their kind of average salary is about $90,000, and they're bringing a lot of, a lot of folks into the area that maybe otherwise wouldn't have, you know, come to the Omaha area, and hopefully attracting a lot of those folks off the base with those higher credentials. So, excited to help them out, and kind of with that, if there's ever companies that, you know, are looking for some of those job training funds, happy to kind of help them and, or, you know, make those connections with the state. Moving on to just kind of projects that we're seeing, that we're kind of getting in, we're having a lot of food process, food processing and manufacturing projects. And that's kind of the backend, not the kill facilities, but more of the flavoring, smoking, cutting up, kind of processes. And then with that, we're also seeing a lot of cold storage facilities. And there's, I think there's one or two kind of big contracts out there that we keep seeing really similar cold storage projects looking at the area. So, that's kind of the, the types of projects we're seeing. And then finally, kind of what we're doing in Bellevue recently, you know, with, with the flooding, we've kind of moved our eyes a little bit over to Highway 75 for the time being while those levies are raised and improved. We did have a prospect visit. One of the things that they needed was rail. So, we showed them a site owned by Frank Creachell on Fairview and kind of Fort Crook. So, they were kind of looking for more square sided and ended up meeting their needs just because the rail was going to be pretty cost intensive, and it was kind of a national search. But then there's a property just north, north of that where they're putting some dirt filter in that we think is going to be a really attractive site. Utilities are there, access is there. It's a, we're really excited for that to start to get on the market, and we think that one's going to go pretty quick. So, we're starting to work with that landowner and just, it's not often that we have a site that has the utilities ready to go and that the developer wants to sell. So, we'll be excited to get that off the ground. Other than that, I know some of the things we did second quarter, we, we committed $5,000 to the Sarpy County Housing Study. So, housing continues to be a major issue, workforce housing. There's a lot of housing going up, but it's all rather expensive housing. So, for some of the jobs that we're getting, it's difficult to afford that. So, I'm excited to see what that, you know, comes up, and hopefully we'll get some developers to buy into some more workforce housing. But other than that, if there's any questions, be happy to answer those. Otherwise, it's kind of a quick shot at second quarter and some of third quarter.
Do you see anything the metro area is doing as far as your job force, what we're doing to keep people here or bring people here?
It's, so I know there's, one of the things they kind of focus on is the tech talent. So, I know Omaha and Lincoln kind of joined forces, the two chambers, to kind of make a more concerted effort to try and draw from like Kansas City, Minneapolis, Chicago, to really try and kind of blast some of those tech talent, tech job opportunities there. So, I know that's something that's going on. Workforce wise, that's something really, I guess more the workforce development. There's, it's still kind of starting out, but I think there's going to be more, I would say collaboration between like the schools, the businesses, and the secondary institutions. So, I think there's, there's, there's a lot, I know, kind of more towards the workforce training and development, and then there's kind of some more of those targeted reaches towards different markets. But I think we're seeing a lot of the same problems with, you know, every community. So, it's, there really is a concerted effort to really attract and retain those workers. And I think housing's a large part of that because it's difficult to find a house in some places depending on what your wage is. But those are a couple of efforts, but I can certainly get a deeper dive and first that information on.
Councilman Preister.
Thank you Mayor. And following up on that, I, there was an article, a lengthy article about what the Omaha Chamber was doing in the World Herald last week, and talking about attracting and keeping the millennials particularly. One of the things they like is less concentrated housing, but they also don't drive cars that much. So, they're looking for either public transportation or bike routes so they can ride bikes. Would you care to comment on that?
Yeah, and I know that's kind of, it's one of the, one of the beauties of Sarpy County is kind of you get those bigger yards, those nicer developments. But then it's just, you know, I think as density comes, we're going to see some more of those trends and opportunities. I know there's a, a public hearing, kind of an open house on looking at kind of an Omaha to Lincoln regional bus to kind of, you know, ship workers back and forth. And it's, it's, I think multimodal is kind of the, the key word here. There's many different opportunities there are because I know there's a lot of people that, you know, depending on what city you're in, you're not going to need a car, and that's a 30, 40,000 dollar investment, you know. So, if you move to a city and not have that, not need that, or not need two cars, maybe you just need one car in your household, that's certainly attractive. So, there's starting to be a push, and I think we're starting to see more and more. But it's kind of, until the density comes, it's difficult to send out a transit when it's not going to get utilized as heavy as it would be. So, I think it's, it's kind of on its way, but I think density is kind of the key factor here.
Sure. And you commented on $90,000 salary being an average wage. Please send some average wage jobs to Bellevue.
Councilman Welch.
So, there's a lot of talk about workforce housing, and I've asked quite a few people, what price range of housing is that? Because I can't get a, an answer as to what that number is. Do you have any idea what that is?
I was, I mean, ideally, I think you'd try and get that 150, 200,000 dollars. But I think new construction wise, it's probably going to be, you know, I think the cheapest house you can build is about 250 probably, I mean, land. As far as land and construction costs go, and I know just how tight things are right now, that's a big issue. And hopefully with that housing study, you'll get a little bit better of an idea. It's tough when, you know, you have a new apartment, that's nine, or $900 for a one bedroom, and that's kind of market rate, so to speak. And then you look at, you know, what you can get a mortgage for, if you can get that $900, but a lot of it comes down to the down payment. So, I mean, I'd say ideally that 150 to 200, but probably more realistically, that 200 to 250.
So, we're saying that the work, the workforce housing would be more of the 150 to 200, but because of construction costs, that number sometimes isn't able to be targeted on brand new houses, but it could be on the resale.
Exactly.
And then the resales move to the new construction and kind of start that trend up type of thing. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions for Josh? Thank you Josh.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Okay, I have three proclamations to read, so bear with me. I'm going to come out to the front podium. We'll start with National Drive Electric Week. So, if there's anybody here, please come up to the podium.
Hi, I'm Bill Moore.
Hey, Corbin Sierra Club.
Albert Lear Sierra Club.
I'm John Perrin, Complete Streets.
Thank you. And Councilman Preister is going to join him. Okay, City of Bellevue, Nebraska, Office of the Mayor proclamation. This is National Drive Electric Week, September 14th through 22nd, 2019. Whereas petroleum fuel vehicles are responsible for over 50% of our local greenhouse gas emissions and are contributing factor to air pollution threatening the health of our citizens and the sustainability of our planet. And whereas the imbalance between gasoline resources and worldwide demand is escalating gasoline prices to level, levels that overburden commerce, hurt economic growth, and cause hardship to our citizens. And whereas our transportation sector needs to move toward adoption of clean energy technology, including electric vehicles that reduce dependence on foreign fuels, support in healthy environment and economy. And whereas the City of Bellevue is dedicated to being a leader in the use of clean energy, establishing policies and practices that conserve energy, promote sustainability, including having two electric vehicles and rooftop solar panels. And whereas September 14th through 22nd, 2019, has been designated as National Drive Electric Week throughout the United States to educate our people about the benefits of plug-in electric vehicles and to promote, promote their use. And whereas on September 15th, 2019, 12 to 4:00 PM, Bellevue University will host a free electric car show. Now therefore, I Rusty Hike, Mayor Bellevue, Nebraska, do hereby proclaim September 14th through 22nd, 2019, as Drive Electric Week in Bellevue, and call upon everyone to join me in supporting the aims and goals of this effort. Thank you. Turn around and get up.
Thank you.
Yes.
I do have an electric golf cart, by the way. I chose that over gas. And I would get one of those Tesla trucks if I could afford one, but maybe someday. Alright, so next we have the Constitution Week. So whoever's here for Constitution Week, please come forward. Just one, huh?
Just me.
Say your name under the microphone.
Jackie McIntosh with the Daughters of the American Revolution, were the major Isaac Sadler La Bellevue chapter.
Alright, thanks for coming. The City of Bellevue, Nebraska, Office of the Mayor proclamation, designating September 17th through 23rd, 2019, as Constitution Week in Bellevue, Nebraska. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas September 17th, 2018, marks the 232nd anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I Rusty Hike, Mayor Bellevue, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. I bet you we have somebody here for the library card signup month?
Yes.
Linda?
I'm sorry, Julie.
It's alright. Do you want to take a picture first?
No.
You going to read it?
Go ahead and take the picture, I guess.
Picture first.
Okay. City of Bellevue, Nebraska, Office of the Mayor proclamation, library card signup month 2019. Whereas a library card is the most important school set, supply of all, and whereas signing up for a library card is the first step towards academic achievement and lifelong learning. And whereas libraries play an important role in the education and development of children, and whereas library programs serve students of all ages, from early literacy to homework help to GED classes. And whereas librarians lead the way in creating inclusive spaces and developing diverse collections for children and people of all backgrounds to connect and learn together. And whereas libraries bridge the digital divide by providing a full range of full, a full range of information and services to children and adult learners. And whereas libraries continue to transform and expand their services in ways that meet the needs of the communities they serve. Whereas libraries open a world of infinite possibilities through resource and services to help people pursue their passions and give students the tools to succeed in school and beyond. And therefore, be it restored that I, Mayor Rusty Hike, proclaim September as library card signup month in the City of Bellevue, and encourage everyone to sign up for their own library card day.
Thank you Mayor.
Sure. Alright, thank you for attending. Moving on to 8, Organizational Matters 8B, Approval of the Continuance of the Current Budget Task Force. Councilman Shannon pulled it off, so let you start.
Alright. Yeah, I'll, I'll note that Rich praised our budget task force for being good listeners. And so, I, I appreciate that they're able to listen to the information they're being given. But unfortunately, the rest of the council wasn't able to listen to that information. Councilwoman Welch, Councilman Stinson, myself, we were totally cut out of the budget process because of this task force, okay? So, we didn't get any of the information. We didn't get any of the drafts of the budget. We didn't get any information. And there are six equal council people on this council. So, to continue something that did not serve the best interest of the public is not in the best interest of the public, alright? We all need to get this, and if we need to continue this as three on threes, then fine. But all of us need to have this information. First look we got at the budget was when the agenda came out for this meeting, and that can't happen. Okay? We all need to look at it, we all need to make input to it. So, yeah, we're, we're not putting task forces together to feed people's egos, alright? We all need to get the information and be able to do what's best for the citizens. And so, all of us need this information. This task force needs to end tonight, and we all need to be there getting briefed three on three.
Councilman Cook, you want to respond?
Thank you Mayor. Yes, I would like to. Just a couple quick comments. When we create task force, you have to have an ending date. And this one was, just like last year, the ending date would have been today, once we vote on it, and then it's submitted to the state. So, because we have some pending annexations, and I don't know how those annexations are going to go, we're going to vote on some tonight, we'll vote on some probably next month. But the anticipation is, if we do some annexations, that we will have to do an amended budget. I did not feel it would be necessary to put together another task force that's still going to work on the 2019, 2020 budget. So, we're going to annex potentially some neighborhoods. We're going to see an increase in our property value and our property taxes. And I felt it was more than appropriate to bring the three, the same three council members back together instead of starting from the beginning. We, this task force was ran no different than when Mr. Shannon was on last year's task force. We had meetings with, he was part of it, I was part of it, we met, we put a budget on the council, on the agenda, and any council member, as like anything on our agenda, can call whoever's putting the agenda item on, the item on the agenda. So, anybody could call Rich anytime they knew when the task force was put together, and they knew when it was going to come in front of the council. Anybody could call Mr. Rich Severson and sit down with him one-on-one, which we do on all other tasks, all the reasons. I get hold of the planning department, I get hold of the finance department, I get hold of the street department, I talk to him on the phone, I have meetings with them to discuss things that's going to be on our agenda. So, what sense does it make, after already meeting, to work on the 2019, 2020 budget, that if we would do some annexations, additional annexations, and get additional funds, why would we start from scratch? And we did nothing different when Mr. Shannon was on the budget task force last year. He's upset that I did not put him on it this year. This budget task force, we probably met twice as much time-wise than we did last year working on this budget, because we were running some difficult situations, some good, some bad. But we put a lot of time into it. I asked for anybody's input on this budget probably two or three weeks ago in an email, and I got nothing from Mr. Shannon. So, I'm suggesting, and I ask for everybody's approval, to move forward. We'll see what annexations we get done, maybe we won't, and then we'll have a meeting probably at the end of the year to readjust, to amend our budget. It makes no sense to start all over. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to call upon a personal privilege.
Alright, since Councilman Cook has chosen to attack me personally, I'm going to respond and say that this is not about my not being on the task force. I may be the only accountant on the council, and probably the most appropriate person to be there, but this is not about me personally. This is about three council members that got totally left out of the budget process, didn't even get to look at the budget until the agenda for this meeting came out. And this, we all represent the citizens of Bellevue, we all deserve an equal chance to get to the information so that we can make the, the appropriate decisions. We're all voting on the budget tonight, okay? So, we all need to have the information. We don't need that information bottled up with one person and no one else gets to hear it. So, I, this is not about me. This is just about making sure that all the members of the council equally get the information.
Thank you. For just someone that has been at all the other budget meetings, I, I attended quite a few of them, and simply because there was, sometimes there was three there already, and I didn't feel like I should be in there. But Jim Risto's been at the budget meetings for the most part, and I, I think they were handled very well. I think there was a lot of tension given to them by the three. And I, I do appreciate your time. If there's something we can do to get it out, you know, we'll certainly do that. But again, I would reiterate that everybody's had a chance to, to play a part and, and give their input into this budget cycle. And, and nothing has been hidden, it's been out on the consent, and there's, anybody can call anybody for questions during that time. But Jim, do you have any comments you want to add?
I would only add that if there is, you know, if it's more in the process, if there's something that you feel you need to have shared with you, while it's open for you to reach out to Rich and get the details, if there's something more that from the task force or myself personally could provide out to the other three that are not on it, I'm open to those recommendations. The idea is not to hide the information, keep it out, it's to get through the process as diligently, quickly.
Yeah, I think the problem this year was, nothing was shared.
Well, I think that door is open, and I'm, I'm-
Yeah.
Rich, I mean, you helped me out, I think it's, the information is out there.
The budget was also published in the last meeting before the public hearing.
So, Mr. Shannon, if there's anything that we can do to improve getting information to you, I mean, move our task force forward, let them do their job as far as the amendment goes. It's not regurgitating the 2019, 2020 budget, it's just to look at the amendments. There's information in that amendment which would be much more streamlined than what we're looking at now.
Exactly.
I'll do my part to get that to you in any way that I can, so.
Yeah, and I don't have a heartburn with that. I, I just think that we don't need a task force any longer, we just need to put the information out to the entire council and treat us all equally.
Well, and I think we can still do that with the task force, just share the information as the task force works through those issues. You know, I think as we get, get into the details, lay it out, and then I'll go backwards behind that and share that to you. That way you have full disclosure. Is that-
Yep, that's fine. There are, there are a lot of, I mean, there are a lot of hours put into it, I know, and there's a lot of after-hours done, so to have all six there, I mean, that's the reason to have a task force, is to get things done a little smoother and come back with a recommendation, and all council members have the input. But if there's something we can do, we want to know about it, we'll make it, we'll make it better. I think it worked well, and I think it, it makes sense to continue it for the amended budget at the end of the year, just simply because the, the three on the task force already have all the information, and they can make a recommendation. Councilman Preister.
Thank you Mayor. I, I would say that at first, I was a little reluctant when former Councilman Modry proposed this, but I supported it, and then I have worked in it, and I think that it, the process has worked very well, especially this time. I, I understand that three people weren't a part of that, but all of us voted, three of us, onto it. So, we all had that opportunity to create it. If it wasn't shared enough, I'll take half the responsibility, because I didn't offer it. And I would hope the people who wanted it would take the other half, that they didn't ask more. But for this one or others going forward, I'll be happy to share, as the administration has said- But for this one or others going forward, I'll be happy to share, as the administration has said, whatever information, whatever the process. Or at the level that we are at that time, the information is. And I know Mr. Severson would as well. So I think we can improve our communication and I'm willing to work on that. I get the point. I understand what you said. And I, I agree. On my part, I could have shared a little bit more.
Other comments, questions? Okay, do I have a motion? Sorry, Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion and we approve eight B as envoy.
Second.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Burns. Any questions for the questions, comments? Councilman Shen's computer went black again. Okay, we will take the vote and Mr. Shannon will have to let his vote known by voice. Susan, I vote no.
So we've got five yes votes and one no vote with Mr. Shannon voting no.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item nine, approved citizen communication. Nine A, request to address council. Jillian Ridpath. Five, three, five, two, one, West Dutchman Circle. Is Miss Ridpath in? Yep, she's right up here. Please state your name and your address.
Jillian Ridpath, thirty-five, twenty-one, West Dutchman Circle. Oh, sorry.
It just keeps dying.
Sorry, I had to bring some little people with me.
Ah, you're fine. Okay, you can go ahead and just kind of tell us what you're thinking.
So this kind of goes back a few years. I've been in contact with several of you over the years about the Plaza Three Seventy Square that is directly behind myself and my neighbor's house. They have a V in the concrete, like a swell, that literally drains all of their stormwater into the yard. It started in two thousand and fourteen. And it has continued to be a huge problem. My, my yard is a complete waste. I cannot sell my house. I have frogs in my backyard because there's so much water sitting. I have five kids that cannot play out there. I wanted to just sell my house and move. Nobody will buy it. My house is nice on the inside. You know, nicer than probably a lot of the houses in the neighborhood that are selling. But nobody will buy my house because the backyard is literally a sinkhole. This year, we started with large sinkholes. I mean, these things are three feet deep in some places. This little girl, I just adopted four kids, inherited them from a family member. She's pretty much blind. She, you know, she can't, she has no peripheral vision. And she can't even, I can't even let her play out there because she literally will just fall into the holes. So I got in touch with an engineer that sent an email or sent a letter to you guys. And I know Jeff Roberts replied saying that this is not an issue that the owner of that property should have to repair. Because it dates back to the seventies and eighties. And that this is something that the housing development should have thought about. That's actually completely and totally one hundred percent inaccurate. I moved there in two thousand and twelve. My neighbors that are here moved there in two thousand and eleven. We always had a little bit of water, but it was nothing like this. I have pictures of my son at the age of one and two playing in that backyard. Along that fence line, you can see in the pictures which I can send around, there's no, no erosion.
Hand them up there.
Um, and then. And then the second picture with the pool, this is two thousand and fourteen when the water started coming in.
I'll have to get you back to the mic though when you talk, so.
So the picture with the pool is actually two thousand and fourteen when they repaved the parking lot up there. And I have pictures of what they did with the repaving. So it's not about the V in the concrete. It's about when they repaved the parking lot, all the way through the middle of the parking lot was a swell. And so the water would come off of the roof, out of their eaves. And then some would go left and it would go down Comstock Avenue. And some would go right and it would come under our fence. We're talking about a little bit of water. This is now, so now that they've done this and I can send those pictures around, they've made that parking lot totally flat. So all of the water goes to the left. Which then comes into our yard. I mean, I don't know what else we can possibly do. And if you guys are not willing to stand behind me, there's no point in me even hiring an attorney. What happens in five year? I mean, I don't even know where to turn. If this continues, my whole entire yard is going to sink. The tree that this is mostly impacting is, it's dead. And I need it removed. I have an arborist come out. I've had three, you know, estimates for tree removal. And they're like, if you remove this tree, that is the only thing stopping this water from your basement. I mean, you guys have come out. This is two thousand and fourteen when it started.
Is that when the?
Prior to this, there was not a single problem with erosion.
When was the pavement put down?
Two thousand and fourteen.
And those earlier pictures were prior to that?
This is when the water started. This is, you can see the back. That's all eroded now and where that barrel is, that's all sinkholes now. And you can see in those pictures, it was not like that. So if this was a problem that had started in the eighties when these houses were built, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have any yard. You can't tell me that it's gotten this bad in five years, but in thirty years, nothing happened and nothing has changed? That doesn't make sense. That makes absolutely no sense.
And you said you purchased it in two thousand and twelve?
Yes, my mother and I did.
And there was nothing to disclose? I mean, that wasn't there?
There wasn't there. And these guys lived there in two thousand and eleven. It's actually their house is where the water enters. And for some reason, right there where you can see, where I have at that point, just the logs stopping that because my dog was getting under the fence. Right there is where it takes the brunt. I mean, and now it's actually created another channel that goes in front of that barrel. And that is all just literally sinkholes. I mean, if I put one of my kids in there, I'd probably barely be able to see their head.
I know, I have walked the property and I think another council member too.
Tell me that in five years, it got this out of control. But in the thirty years prior, nothing, I mean, it, something obviously changed. And if I'm telling you it changed, my neighbors are telling you it changed. And my neighbor on the other side who couldn't be here, he actually lived in the house when the, he bought the house when the development began. He was a military, worked in FEMA and he's like, this problem started in two thousand and fourteen.
Since there's a lot of legal questions here, I'm going to turn it over to Brie for, let her speak for a minute.
Just for clarification purposes, the parking lot that you said that was resurfaced, that's not owned by the city of Bellevue, right? That's a strip mall owned by somebody else?
Yes.
And so you're stating that the water is coming from that property then on to your neighbor's property and your property, correct? Okay. So this isn't going to be the answer you want to hear. But it is a civil issue between those property owners. I can't give private legal advice, but if you call my office, my paralegal right here can give you my phone number. Call my office tomorrow and I'm happy to have a conversation with you. Try to point you in the right direction to get the help that you need. Unfortunately, it's not something that the city of Bellevue is going to be able to help with because it is a civil issue between that property owner and you, and your property.
And I respect that. But when you guys write a letter and say to the property owner, this is not your fault. There's nothing that we can be done. This happened from the development. You guys are basically telling the guy like, you don't have to help her, you don't have to do anything. And you guys are writing a letter to this property owner saying, this isn't your fault. Just don't worry about it. It's because of the development back in the eighties. That's completely inaccurate.
And who, who wrote that letter, just for?
Jeff Roberts.
Okay.
Jeff, could you reply? Because that's, that's not what we, we said to Omni.
I have a copy of the letter dated August twentieth. Signed by Jeff Roberts and it was to the engineer. And it says, the designing firm for Golden Hills Two could be deemed negligent for not considering the full impacts of runoff. Coming from Three Seventy Square and not mitigating the runoff during the design process. That's actually completely inaccurate because this was not happening until two thousand and fourteen. The development was in the eighties.
That is a correct statement. The designer should have taken that into account back in the late seventies when they were plating it.
Yeah, and I think we're going to stand by that statement. And I guess I would just reiterate that this isn't, the city of Bellevue doesn't own any of these lots. If the city of Bellevue owned the strip mall lot, for instance, we would be willing to sit down, work with you and fix that issue. But it's a private ownership who owns that. Their water is running off onto your property. I would encourage you to go try to talk to them, get an attorney. And I can help you, get you in the right direction, get you on a clear path and you can call my office to do that.
Well, the thing that, that I think I am most frustrated with is if you're not willing to get involved, then stay out of it. Because if you're writing a letter saying, sir, this is not your problem. This is, goes back to the developer. And if you're saying, so then I had a contractor come out, I'm like, you know what? Then I guess I'll second mortgage my house and I'll have someone come out and we'll drain this to the street. Then you guys say, no, they can't drain it to the street. Well, if you're staying out of it, then just stay out of it and let me drain the, I mean, if it's okay for the water to go in my yard, but it's not okay for the water to go in the street? I mean, it doesn't make sense. So when you guys put that limitation on me, that added fifty-five thousand dollars to the project. I can't take a second mortgage out for a hundred thousand dollars. You know what I mean? Like, so that's fine if you're saying it's not our problem and we're out of it. Then stay out of it and don't tell me how I can fix it.
Well, there's certain things that are going to have to be in compliance with code on your property and permits and stuff like that. And so I think that's where we come in.
Is not in compliance with the code though, because they're draining their runoff onto my property.
And I don't want to get in an argument with you today, but I, I do think that, I, I hear what you're saying. And I, I see the pictures and I, I would be concerned about it too. I would reach out to the property owners. I would encourage you, and I'm not just saying this.
Well, the property owners replied after Mr. Roberts' letter and said, we're not going to do anything.
Call my office tomorrow or Thursday, if that works better for you, or Friday, I'll be here all week. And I'm not just saying that, call my office. I will have that conversation with you. We can work through that. I can answer any of those additional questions and we can get you on that path. I think all of us want to see something fixed here and.
I mean, this is nothing compared, for the record, this is absolutely nothing compared to what it is now. I mean, my yard is a complete washout.
Do you have the letter from the property owners, the commercial strip that said they're not going to do anything?
Yes, I have an email from Alicia Armstrong, who is their property manager.
Could you forward that to us too?
Yes. I mean, the thing about it is, is that it's like, if you guys are sending these letters and saying like, this goes back to the developer. Then really, I can go spend thirty thousand dollars and hire an attorney and try to sue this guy to fix it. But if the city's saying it's not his fault and they have that in writing from you guys.
Well, I think there.
But it is there, I mean, it is.
I think there are some pictures that show that it dates back prior to this parking lot being repaved in whatever it was, two thousand and sixteen. And that it was an issue prior to the development being there. And we can further explore that and maybe I can help you weigh some of those pros and cons.
And that's what I'm telling you. There always was a little bit of water drainage, enough to make your yard stop being wet. But once they made that parking lot flat and directed all the water that way, now it's washing out the soil. Now it's causing major erosion. I mean, it's, I understand what you're saying and I've seen those pictures and I get it, there always was a little bit of water. I'm fine with that. Put up a curb then and let nature take its course. Whatever comes over that curb, I'll take. But we can't have it like this. I mean, at this rate, by next year, after next spring, we won't have a yard. I mean, the whole thing will sink in. Then what are we going to do?
The most I can do for you is offer to help you if you call my office tomorrow. And my paralegal Tani can give you my contact information and I'm happy to help get you on the right path and further that conversation with the administration and, and Public Works. And see if there's anything we can do. But ultimately, it's going to come down to being a civil issue. But we're help, we're happy to help assist how we can in that conversation. Just contact my office, that's, that's all.
Well, and I would really appreciate then if we could stop sending letters to them saying, this is not your problem. If you guys are staying out of it, then stay out of it. If you're in it, don't be half in and half out. You know, I, I mean, that's terrible.
Mr. Roberts.
You know, I'm going to respond to that. That letter would have never went out except for Mr. Menfreaker sent me a letter accusing the city of being negligent to begin with. So that was my response letter back to him. Whoever he distributed to after that, that was up to him. But we were staying out of it until he accused the city of being negligent.
Well, then you could have just said, I'm sorry, I don't feel like we're negligent. You didn't have to say, well, this is not our problem. It, it goes back to the developer. I mean, you guys, it's, it's insane to me. I mean.
I'm going to suggest you just get ahold of Brie and we're not here to hurt you, so just get ahold of Brie.
It sure feels like it when you write those letters. It really feels like you're out to, you're siding with them.
Well, we're putting you in touch with Brie, so that's, we're not going to get any more resolution out of that than what she can do tomorrow.
I would expect nothing less. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, item ten. Ten A, liquor licenses, ten A, recommendation to approve application of David Hodges as manager of the Class C liquor license. For Fraternal Order of Eagles doing business as F O E Aerie thirty-nine, twelve, located at two zero nine West Mission Avenue. Mr. Hodges.
David Hodges with Bellevue Eagles.
And address.
West Mission.
Yes, there you go. Do you, you want to, you want to add what you're doing or?
Basically what this is, is it's just transferring the name on the license. That's all it is. It's staying the same. It's just who's in charge, responsible for the license.
Okay. If you just want to hang around, I'm going to open it for public hearing.
Sure.
Is there, this is open for public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak for or against the liquor license? Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing and do I have a motion? Councilman Burns.
I move that we recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission. The approval of David Hodges as manager of the Class C liquor license for Fraternal Order of Eagles doing business as F O E. Aerie thirty-nine, twelve, located at two oh nine West Mission Avenue.
I'll second that.
Motion by Burns, seconded by Welch. Any discussion?
Questions?
Seeing none, please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you for appearing. Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Item ten B, recommendation to approve the application of Swine Dining Barbecue. Two, Inc., doing business as Swine Dining Barbecue for a Class A liquor license to sell beer at two zero four East Mission Avenue in Bellevue. And for Tyler Sorenson as manager.
Uh, Dane Hodges with Swine Dining Barbecue.
Good evening.
Hello.
Finally going to put a liquor license in there?
Yeah, I mean, we're just wanting a beer license only just for there. We're not going to do any off sale, strictly just bottled beer for people to have a beer with their barbecue. Pretty simple.
If you hold tight, I'm going to open the meeting for a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak for or against the liquor license? Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. Uh, Dane, would you sign the book and put your address down as well, please?
Sure.
Okay, do, a public hearing is closed. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns.
I move that we recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission of the application of Swine Dining Barbecue, Inc. Doing business as Swine Dining Barbecue for a Class A liquor license to sell beer at two oh four East Mission Avenue in Bellevue. And for Tyler Sorenson as manager.
I'll second. Motion by Burns, seconded by Shannon. Any questions, comments?
Is that the address you want on here, Swine Dining's address or my address?
It should be your home address, actually. Sorry. I'll, the only question is, Dane, what are you doing coming here tonight to the council, not bringing samples?
We're actually.
Good point. Please vote.
Before we, before we forget. Everybody says that, everything I go to. That's funny.
All voting yes.
Motion passes. Thanks for appearing.
All right, thanks so much.
Brings us to item eleven, ordinances for adoption, third reading. Eleven A, ordinance number three nine five four, request to annex Sanitary Improvement District number one seventy-one, Trigaron. Susan, would you please read the ordinance description?
An ordinance to annex to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska. Certain lands, lots, and real estate lying within Sanitary Improvement District number one seventy-one as outlined in the ordinance to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, and designating an effective date.
Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve ordinance number uh, thirty-nine fifty-four.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Burns. Any questions, comments? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Eleven B, ordinance number three nine five five, request to annex Sanitary Improvement District number one seventy-seven, Fox Ridge Estates. Susan, would you read the ordinance description, please?
An ordinance to annex to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska. Certain lands, lots, and real estate lying within Sanitary and Improvement District number one seventy-seven as outlined in the ordinance to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, and designating an effective date.
Councilman Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve ordinance number thirty-nine fifty-five.
I'll second that.
Motion by Preister, seconded by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Eleven C, ordinance number three nine five six, request to annex Sanitary and Improvement District number one eighty-two. Three seventy point. Uh, Susan, would you read the ordinance description, please?
An ordinance to annex to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska. Certain lands, lots, and real estate lying within Sanitary and Improvement District number one eighty-two as outlined in the ordinance to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, and designating an effective date.
Need a motion? Councilman Cook.
I'll make a motion. We approve ordinance number thirty-nine fifty-six.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Preister. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Eleven D, ordinance number three nine five seven. Request to annex Sanitary and Improvement District number one eighty-three, Pilgrim's Landing. Susan, would you read the ordinance description, please?
An ordinance to annex to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska. Certain lands, lots, and real estate lying within Sanitary and Improvement District number one eighty-three as outlined in the ordinance to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, and designating an effective date.
Councilman Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve ordinance thirty-nine fifty-seven.
Second.
Motion by Preister, seconded by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item eleven E, ordinance number three nine five eight. Request to annex Sanitary and Improvement District number one eighty-six, Oakhurst, Oak Ridge East. Susan, would you read the ordinance description, please?
An ordinance to annex to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska. Certain lands, lots, and real estate lying within Sanitary and Improvement District number one eighty-six as outlined in the ordinance to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, and designating an effective date.
Councilwoman Welch.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number three nine five eight.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Preister. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Item eleven F, ordinance number three nine five nine. Request to annex Sanitary and Improvement District number one ninety-seven, Heartland Hills. Susan, please read the ordinance description, please.
An ordinance to annex to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska. Certain lands, lots, and real estate lying within Sanitary and Improvement District number one ninety-seven as outlined in the ordinance to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, and designating an effective date.
Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve ordinance number thirty-nine fifty-nine.
Second.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Stinson. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Item eleven G, ordinance number three nine six zero. Request to annex Sanitary and Improvement District number two sixty-five, Williamsburg. Susan, please read the ordinance description, please.
An ordinance to annex to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska. Certain lands, lots, and real estate lying within Sanitary and Improvement District number two sixty-five as outlined in the ordinance to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, and designating an effective date.
Councilwoman Welch.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number thirty-nine sixty. Second.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Cook. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Item eleven H, ordinance number three nine six one. Susan, would you read the ordinance description, please?
An ordinance to annex to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska. Certain lands, lots, and real estate lying within Lot One, except part dedicated for right-of-way Southwest Elementary School Edition and tax lot two A, two A two, located in the northwest quarter of Section fifteen. Township thirteen north, range thirteen east of the six P M. Part of Lot Six and part of Lot Seven, Trigaron Town Center. Tax lots ten B and eleven, located in the southwest quarter of Section ten. Township thirteen north, range thirteen east of the six P M. Tax lot thirteen, located in the northwest quarter of Section ten. Township thirteen north, range thirteen east of the six P M. Parcel number zero one zero nine six nine three eight one. Part of tax lot three A, located in the northwest quarter of Section sixteen. Township thirteen north, range thirteen east of the six P M. Parcel number zero one one five nine eight four two one. And tax lot three A two, located in the southwest quarter of Section nine. Township thirteen north, range thirteen east of the six P M to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, and designating an effective date.
Councilman Burns.
I move that we approve ordinance number thirty-nine sixty-one.
Prior to that, I think we skipped a couple things there, Susan. Uh, and a Tani confirmed by head nod there. So after parcel zero one zero nine six nine three eight one, it should read part of tax lot three A located in the northwest quarter of Section six, township thirteen north, range thirteen east.
Section sixteen.
Did I not say that? Section sixteen. Township thirteen north, range thirteen east of the six P M, parcel number, this was what was missed, parcel number zero one zero nine eight three six nine four, part of tax lot three A, located in the northwest quarter of Section sixteen. Township thirteen north, range thirteen east of the six P M, and then the rest of it was correct. So I would just add that into the reading of the ordinance, and then you can make the motion.
Okay, we have motion by Burns. Second, seconded by Welch.
And since this is an unincorporated area, I need to confirm with Ms. Palm that section, or statute sixteen dash one three zero, section six has been complied with.
Yes, we have complied.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Councilman Cook.
Uh, Mayor, when is the effective date, if this, the ones that have already passed it, passed, and if we pass this one?
October one.
October first, okay. Thank you.
Okay, please vote.
Mr. Preister, he's yours going through for ya. Thank you. All voting yes.
Thank you. Item eleven I, ordinance number three nine six three. Approval of the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty fiscal year budget. Uh, we will deal with ordinance number thirty-nine sixty-three and the budget in different steps. So one, resolution number two zero one nine dash two six. We will consider resolution number two zero one nine dash two six, which is resolution setting the property tax request for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty fiscal year. I will open this matter up for public hearing on the resolution two zero one nine dash two six, which is in regards to setting the property tax request for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty fiscal year. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to that resolution?
Hi, I'm Jim O'Drey, uh, twelve oh seven, Rebecca Court in Bellevue. Uh, this, uh, tax request, what, Rich adds about one point two million over last year's, our request, is that somewhere in that neighborhood? I didn't grab the stuff tonight, so.
Yep, there's a form for that.
Yep.
That they've put in this year, and it's in the packet here somewhere. How's it go, Jim? The, the questions are easy, it's the answers that are hard. Lucky you had a budget committee that didn't ask questions.
Yeah, I, I had it at home. I didn't bring it, but didn't have time to swing by home to get it.
Okay, last year's tax ask was eighteen million, nine hundred and thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one dollars and forty-six cents. This year, it's, uh, twenty million, so you are correct that twenty million, six hundred and ninety-six thousand, four hundred and four dollars and three cents.
Okay.
So it is different than last year.
So about, all right, over one and a half. One point three million more.
Okay, yes.
I don't know, whatever the math is. Okay. And that includes, uh, some annexations, correct? From the, the first round, there were first or two rounds we did.
That includes some unincorporated and Black Hawk.
Okay. And so, uh, the overall increase was a little over nine percent. Six percent of that was, uh, with just the same property as we had last year.
Yes.
Due to valuation increases.
Yes.
Okay. The, when will the other annexations, uh, property taxes take a factor? Will that go in? How much of that will go into this budget versus next year's?
The ones that were approved tonight are effective October first. Uh, they will levy their own taxes for the next year, but as soon as they become, uh, annexed by the city, we, the, the city will actually receive those taxes.
Okay.
But we, but it will not be at our levied rate. That'll be the year after that, so it won't be for the two thousand nineteen year. It'll be two thousand twenty, that we will be levying at whatever the rate we levy.
Okay. All right. Uh, so okay, so those won't, uh, impact the, uh, property tax request for this year?
Not included in this budget.
Okay. All right.
Because we didn't know the, what the outcome of this meeting
Right.
would be.
Right. All right. I just, uh, and I, I know you're gonna have to do a revised budget before the end of the year to account for some of these things.
That is now the expectation.
So, uh, I guess we need to, I'd ask you to, to look at that and see what additional property tax may be required or requested at that time, and, uh, give consideration to perhaps a, uh.
Excuse me, but there, there won't be any change in the property tax request.
Okay, that's what I was trying to get to before.
This will be the city's property tax request for the year. It, it, it won't be changed from this one. It'll be
It'll be next year.
next year's budget, the twenty twenty, twenty tw- twenty twenty-one budget, okay?
All right, great.
Yes.
That's what I wanted to get straight.
Okay, yes.
Thank you. All right, I guess that's it. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve resolution twenty nineteen dash twenty-six.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Eleven I, nope, sorry, is that right? Eleven I two. Approval of an additional one percent in the base of restricted funds. Just need a motion? Councilman Cook.
I'll make a motion that we approve the addition of one percent in the base of restrict, restricted funds.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Preister. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Uh, item eleven I three, let's see, we will consider it ordinance number three nine six three, which is the approval of the two thousand nineteen, twenty fiscal year budget. Motion? Councilwoman Welch?
I'm gonna make a motion to approve ordinance number three nine six three, approval of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty fiscal year budget.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Preister. Any questions or comments? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor, I just wanna make a quick comment, I wanna thank Rich Severson, Marcy, and the rest of his staff, we met with some, uh, public, or we went, we met with the Public Works Director, the Police Chief, the Fire Chief, there was other staff that, uh, assisted in putting together the budget. And I wanna thank, uh, Mister Preister and Mister Burns for being on the committee, uh, we spent a lot of time and effort on this budget, I think it's a good budget. But a lot of the work was done by Rich and his staff, also Mister Risto and Mayor and Bree attended, uh, the meetings and provided input, I thought it was a real good process. I'm glad to see where we're at, and I wanna thank everybody involved.
Thank you. Item twelve. Okay, we have a motion by Welch, seconded by Preister, any further comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Good thing I got people to keep me straight. Item twelve, ordinances for public hearing, second reading, twelve A. Ordinance number three nine six four, amending section six through eighteen pertaining to dangerous, six dash eighteen pertaining to dangerous and potentially dangerous dogs, specifically section six point one eight K pertaining to proof of liability insurance requirement from five hundred thousand dollars to one hundred thousand dollars. Susan, could you read that ordinance?
An ordinance to amend section six dash eighteen of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to dangerous and potentially dangerous dogs and to provide an effective date.
Thank you, I'll open this for public hearing, is there anyone here wishing to speak regarding the dangerous dogs? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, and there's also been a request by the city attorney to waive the third reading and vote, uh, tonight, is there anyone wishes to make that motion? Oh, sorry, I thought you were pointing my paper. Councilman Preister?
Turn your mic on.
I need a mirror.
Thank you. I, I appreciate, I'd add some questions on this, but I think this is in the public interest, it will save them money. And because of that, I will make the motion that we suspend our rule requiring three readings, we've just conducted the public hearing and the suspension will be to vote on this tonight.
I'll second that.
So a motion by Preister, seconded by Welch to suspend the rules for three separate readings and hold a vote tonight. Is there any discussion, comments? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you, I'll take it. Councilman Shannon?
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance three nine six four, the dangerous dog ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Preister, any comments or questions?
I think this is a really good thing because, uh, our, our liability amount was set way out of range and this brings us down to where all the other cities around us are, and, uh, this is, this is basically just correcting an ordinance that was badly out of line with the rest of the communities.
Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item thirteen, ordinances for introduction, first reading, thirteen A, ordinance number three nine six six, requesting annex sanitary and improvement district number sixty-seven, Normandy Hills. Susan, would you read the ordinance description, please?
An ordinance to annex to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, certain lands, lots and real estate lying within sanitary and improvement district number once, number sixty-seven as outlined in the ordinance to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska and designating an effective date.
Thank you, the second reading and public hearing will be held September seventeenth, two thousand nineteen at six P M here in the council chambers. Thirteen B, ordinance number three nine six seven, request to annex sanitary and improvement district number one eighty, Lakewood Villages. Susan, would you read the ordinance description, please?
An ordinance to annex to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, certain lands, lots and real estate lying within sanitary and improvement district number one eighty as outlined in the ordinance to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska and designating an effective date.
The second reading and public hearing will be held September seventeenth, two thousand nineteen at six P M here in the council chambers. Item thirteen C, ordinance number three nine six eight, request to annex sanitary and improvement district number two zero eight, sunrise phases three and four. Susan, would you read the ordinance description, please?
An ordinance to annex to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, certain lands, lots and real estate lying within sanitary and improvement district number two oh eight as outlined in the ordinance to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska and designating an effective date.
The second reading and public hearing will be held September seventeenth, two thousand nineteen at six P M here in the council chambers. Item thirteen D, ordinance number three nine six nine, request to annex sanitary and improvement district number two fifteen, Pipers Glen. Susan, would you read the ordinance description, please?
An ordinance to annex to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, certain lands, lots and real estate lying within sanitary and improvement district number two fifteen as outlined in the ordinance to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska and designating an effect, an effective date.
Thank you, the second reading and public hearing will be held September seventeenth, two thousand nineteen at six P M here in the council chambers. Item thirteen E, ordinance number three nine seven zero, request to annex sanitary and improvement district number two forty-two, Cedar View. Susan, would you read the ordinance description, please?
An ordinance to annex to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, certain lands, lots and real estate lying within sanitary and improvement district number two forty-two as outlined in the ordinance to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska and designating an effective date.
The second reading and public hearing will be held September seventeenth, two thousand nineteen at six P M here in the council chambers. Item thirteen F, ordinance number three nine seven one, request to annex sanitary and improvement district number two sixty-nine, Orchard Valley. Susan, would you read the ordinance description, please?
An ordinance to annex to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, certain lands, lots and real estate lying within sanitary and improvement district number two sixty-nine is outlined in the ordinance to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska and designating an effective date.
Thank you, the second reading and public hearing will be held September seventeenth, two thousand nineteen at six P M here in the council chambers. Item thirteen G, ordinance number three nine seven two, request to annex sanitary and improvement district number two seventy-nine, Spring Creek. Susan, would you read the ordinance description, please?
An ordinance to annex to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, certain lands, lots and real estate lying within sanitary improvement district number two seventy-nine is outlined in the ordinance to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska and designating an effective date.
Thank you, the second reading and public hearing will be held September seventeenth, two thousand nineteen at six P M here in the council chambers. Item thirteen H, number s- three nine seven three, request to annex sanitary and improvement district number two eighty, two eight zero, Kennedy Town Center. Susan, would you read the ordinance description, please?
An ordinance to annex to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, certain lands, lots and real estate lying within sanitary and improvement district number two eighty as outlined in the ordinance to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska and designating an effective date.
Thank you, the second reading and public hearing will be held September seventeenth, two thousand nineteen at six P M here in the council chambers. Item thirteen I, ordinance number three nine seven four, request to annex sanitary and improvement district number two eighty-nine, Colonial Point at Fairview. Susan, please read the ordinance description, please?
An ordinance to annex to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, certain lands, lots and real estate lying within sanitary and improvement district number two eighty-nine as outlined in the ordinance to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska and designating an effective date.
Thank you, the second reading and public hearing will be held September seventeenth, two thousand nineteen at six P M here in the council chambers. Item thirteen J, ordinance number three nine seven five, Susan, would you read the ordinance description, please?
An ordinance to annex to the city of Bellevue, lot one fifty-six, Pipers Glen, lot three fifty-two, Oakhurst, lot three six A, two A, Pleasant Hill or Martin subdivision, tax lot B one B located in the northeast quarter of section six and ta- tax lot one B located in the northeast quarter, section fifteen and all in township thirteen north, range thirteen east of the six P M, Sarpy County, Nebraska and designating an effective date.
Thank you, the second reading and public hearing will be held September seventeenth, two thousand nineteen at six P M here in the council chambers. Item number fourteen, public hearing on matters other than ordinances, fourteen A, request permission for Midwest fireworks to conduct a fireworks display on September twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen in conjunction with the Bellevue East Homecoming Football Game. I will open up the, open it up for public hearing, is there anyone here to speak for or against the fireworks display? Councilman Shannon?
I'll make a motion to approve fourteen A.
Second.
I will now. The public, the public hearing is closed, seeing no one come forward, and I'll accept the motion from Shannon, seconded by Burns. Any further discussion, questions? Councilman Prester?
Thank you, Mayor, just a comment that th- this is how I think it's best to use fireworks with the professionals in an area that's contained, over their own property, not falling on neighbors, not creating fire hazards, having the appropriate safety measures in place, and I think it complies with best practices, so I support fireworks, but I support safety even more, and this meets both.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you, item fifteen, resolutions, fifteen A, resolution number two zero one nine dash thirty, authorizing the mayor to sign the LPA program agreement for federal aid funds with the Nebraska Department of Transportation, NDOT for Thirty-Sixth Street Improvements Project. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make a motion, we approve resolution number twenty nineteen dash thirty.
Second.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Burns, any discussion, comments, questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you, item fifteen B, resolution number two zero one nine dash thirty-one, authorizing the mayor to sign the LPA program agreement for federal aid funds with the Nebraska Department of Transportation for the major resurfacing project. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make a motion, we approve resolution number twenty nineteen dash thirty-one.
Second.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Burns, questions, comments? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you, item fifteen C, resolution number two zero one nine dash three two. Approve resolution and authorize the permits and inspections department to issue permits that have been, will be requested for the dwelling located at two six one one Harrison Street. Councilwoman Welch?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty nineteen dash thirty-two.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Cook, or seconded by Burns, sorry. Councilman Prester?
Thank you, Mayor, I'm going to vote against this, uh, the reason is, we have condemned this house and having been condemned, immediately following the condemnation, it went into a tax sale. In the tax sale, somebody purchased the property and then went to court to keep it from being demolished after we had already let the bid, followed the entire process and had a contractor ready to do the demolition. The reason it's before us now is because our permits and inspection department can't give a permit when it's already in condemnation unless the council approves it. I don't think the council should approve it, one, because I think the people that purchased it have perhaps good intentions, but I don't think they can follow through, they have not been following through in a timely manner on what they have so far, so I'm not sure that they can follow through if we grant the permits to be issued. So at best, I, I think this is a very iffy situation and I don't think we should be supporting it. And I would certainly ask legal counsel to make any comments.
Mister Mayor, at this time, I would make a motion to go on a closed session for discussion of this item for the protection of the public. City council members, legal, the mayor, city administrator Jim Risto and Tony.
I'll second that.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Welch to go into closed session regarding resolution number two zero one nine dash three two. Those going in will be council members, the mayor, uh, Bree and Tony with legal.
You and Jim.
And, uh, Mister Risto as administrator. I'm in there. I said mayor. Okay, uh.
What was the second on that again, Mayor?
Second was Welch.
Okay.
Okay, um, any questions, comments, all right, we'll vote, going into closed session.
All voting yes.
It is seven twenty-seven, the council has, uh, voted to go into closed session where the discussion will be held to resolution number two zero one nine dash three two. Okay, we are back from closed session, Shannon, uh, made the motion, Welch seconded to return from closed session, it's now seven forty-two. Uh, where we, where our discussion was held to those items on resolution number two zero one nine dash three two, please vote.
No.
We need to vote to come out of closed session.
Yep, that's what it is. But we're voting to come out of closed session. The motion was made by Shannon, seconded by Welch.
All voting yes.
Thank you, so, uh, we are on resolution number two zero one nine dash three two. And we had a motion, didn't we?
We had a motion and a second.
And a second.
We had a motion by Welch, seconded by Burns. We had a motion by Welch, seconded by Burns, to approve. Councilman Shannon?
Mr. Mayor, I would offer an amendment to the motion on the table, adding at the last sentence at the end, whereas the order of condemn, condemnation is hereby suspended to allow for permits. Okay? Nowhere, right now, what we've done is we've got a resolution that's going to say they can have their permits, but we didn't suspend the condemnation in there. So, just for clarification, we're adding at the end that we're suspending the condemnation to allow them to do the work.
Second.
Um, motion by Shannon, seconded by Preister to amend it, as Councilman Shannon just stated. Any questions or comments? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to comment that I gained new information in the closed session about the timeline and that information was very helpful. And in addition to that, I just want to mention that this is one of many properties, and we do have a backlog of those properties that our city administrator is working with permits on to address that backlog. We have some properties that are and have been putting people and children particularly at risk, and I think we need to move forward on those. If this one can be rehabbed, that's good and fine, and I think we can give the person who's attempting to do that a chance. So, where I originally raised issue, I'm glad we had the discussion, and I have new information to base my vote on. Thank you.
Okay, so any further comments, questions? We are voting on the amendment where Shannon made the motion, Preister seconded. Please vote.
Are we voting twice, Susan?
Yes. Yes.
All voted yes?
Now, we'll return to the original motion on the resolution number two zero one nine dash three two, made by Welch, seconded by Burns, as amended. Any further comments or questions? Please vote.
I'll get that amendment later in there.
All voted yes?
Thank you. Item fifteen D, resolution number two zero one nine dash three three, resolution number... Never mind, it's doubled up here. Approve and authorize the mayor to sign resolution two zero one nine dash three three, approving the amended budget for Sarpy County and city's wastewater agency for the 2018-19 fiscal year. Councilwoman Welch?
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number two zero one nine dash three three.
Second.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Cook. Any discussion, questions? Please vote.
All voted yes?
Thank you. Item seventeen, administration reports. Any comments regarding the reports or questions? Okay, we'll put those in the record. Eighteen, there is no closed session. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Welch to adjourn. Please vote. Unless you have discussion.
It's a common.
All voting yes?